This weekend has been a wonderful opportunity for us to get a little bit higher. What do you sense? The Book of Ephesians. The first brother whose book said it's not like the other books. Do you agree with that? I, I think it's a little bit like this, right? It's not like Corinthians, you'll agree with me. We can identify with Corinthians, right? Because that's where we are, right? But when it comes to Ephesians, it's like masters. It's like a higher class. And that's why we need to pray. We need to pray that these words, the Lord can reveal it to us. No matter what the brothers speak, there is no way anyone can put this into us except the Holy Spirit. So my encouragement to all of us is when we go back, let's behave like the Berean Christians. Do yourself this favor. Starting from yesterday, this afternoon and this evening, go through these things. Bring it before the Lord. Ask the Lord to reveal it to you. If you don't get this revelation, it becomes another teaching. You know, I'll tell you something. There was a brother, he knew about the church and so there was a time, there was a situation, there was a problem. And he had to step down from the eldership. But he didn't leave the church. That was humility. What it taught me is that he saw the church. He, he saw what God is doing. And I pray that each one of us would see the church. When we see the church, we will give our all for it. Chapter 3, Ephesians. Lord Jesus. I just read a few verses, just listen. We're gonna do a whole lot of reading. For this reason, Ephesians, chapter 3, from verse 1. "I, Paul, the prisoner of Christ Jesus, for you Gentiles, if indeed you have heard of the dispensation of the grace of God, which was given to me for you." I saw one translation that said, assuming you have heard about the dispensation. Dispensation is like an administration. And the choice of words here are very pertinent for us to know. He says, "The dispensation of the grace of God, which was given to me for you." In this particular chapter, Paul was a little bit specific. And then we will see that when he introduced himself. And I also noticed that in this chapter and in this book, Paul chose this different pronoun. "I." Introduction. Colossians, chapter 1, verses 24. Colossians 1, verses 24 to 27. I will also read. "I now rejoice in my sufferings for you and fill up in my flesh what is lacking in the afflictions of Christ for the sake of his holy body, which is the church, of which I became a minister according to the stewardship," that word again, right? "according to the stewardship from which, from God, which was given to me for you again," right? "to fulfill the word of God." Oh, Jesus. It looks like if the Bible had ended in Matthew, Mark, looking John, can anybody tell me what's missing? If the Bible ended in John, what would have been missing? Eh? The church, the church, of course. And then if we turn our minds back, God's original intention, like the brother wanted to show us or showed us here yesterday, even though he called out Abraham, God's ultimate intention was for mankind. But he called Abraham out. Just like today, the church is called out once. When he called Abraham out, it progressed. It looks like every time God wants to call some people out. But his ultimate intention was for mankind. Don't forget Genesis. The brothers have already spoken to us. It was for mankind, man fell. But along the line, it seemed as if God was trying to call out a people. We also saw in the last Exodus that we were reading. If you read chapter 19, in verse 6, you realize that God wanted a generation, royal priesthood. Sometimes today, we think who is the priest and we say is the Levi. No, that wasn't the original intention. When they worshipped that golden calf, God was not happy with them. He wanted to wipe them off and Moses said, "No, you, you can't do that," right? Otherwise, people would say you brought them out to wipe them off, right? But when Moses went down, like we saw, when we were going through the book of Exodus, wow, was it what God saw? This is what we are really worshiping idol. And then he said, "Who is on the lost side?" You remember? Then the tribe of Levi came out. So you can't blame God. I used to think that they were special people, right? So God, the tribe of Levi should be the priests. No! God's intention was everybody. And Moses put it open. It's like today, whosoever will, let him come. Yet some people don't want to come. So the tribe of Levi came to Moses. And as a reward, God gave them the priesthood. If you continue like that, it looks as if the invitation is usually to all, even today. We look at the children of Israel as still a type. But God's ultimate intention is for mankind. So when the Lord Jesus finished on earth, he still didn't get to the Gentiles. There was an experience he had with the Samaritan woman, you remember? He didn't get to the Gentiles. And that is why Paul said, "I was given this ministry to complete the word of God." So you, if by the time we have gone through, you realize that right from the time he left, his intention was still with mankind. Because in the day of Pentecost, you remember, they spoke in different languages. Do you know why? He didn't just, wasn't addressing the Jews only. He wanted to reach to the uttermost part of the earth. He told them, but you see, they didn't quite get it. So God's intention included you and I, right from the origin. So in this particular chapter, we'll go in a little bit of a sequence. And then we will realize that this intention had you and me in this plan. So you remember the story? There was a lot of frustration on the way and I'm, I would jump a little bit and I'll come back. One of the frustrations was that in Acts, chapter 2, we will see a little bit of the frustrations. God's intention was for this gospel to reach everybody. That was why he allowed the spirit. If you read Acts very well, you will notice that at some point in time, the Jews were getting jealous. How come the Gentiles are receiving the Holy Spirit? Have you seen that before? That shows that they didn't really get God's intention. They thought it was just for them. No, it was for all of us. In Acts, chapter 2, verses 4. Acts, chapter 2, verse 4. He says, "And they were all filled with the Holy Spirit and began to speak with other tongues, as the Spirit gave them utterance." This is not that type they do in the Pentecostal group, blah, 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 blah. No. They spoke. Shirley, you know, you normally speak in tongue, right? If you were there, you would hear them speaking in your own language. Right? They would have even been speaking in my own dialect, right? Did you think about that? Because he wanted the gospel to reach everywhere. From verse 5. "And they were dwelling in Jerusalem, Jews, devout men from every nation under heaven." That was supposed to be, that would have kicked it out, right? Everybody would have heard the gospel and taken it back to their place, right? "And when this sound occurred, the multitude came together and were confused, because everyone heard them speak in his own language. Then they were all amazed, marveled, saying to one another, 'Look, and not all these, all these who speak Galileans? And how is it that we hear each in our own language in which we were born? Patience, Medes, and Elamites, and those dwelling in Mesopotamia, Judea, Cappadocia, Panto, and Asia, Phrygia, Pamphylia, even Egypt, Africa wasn't left out, and the parts of Libya too, right? Adjointing, Sirens, Seren, visitors from Rome, both Jews and the proselytes, Corinthians, aha, even Arabs. We hear them speak in our own tongues and wonderful works of God." So they were all amazed and perplexed, saying to one another, "Whatever could this mean? It meant God wanted to reach mankind. Somebody should have told them." But right from there, in verse 13, he says, "Others mocking said, 'They are full of wine.'" Sometimes what we are doing, people think we are full of wine, eh? These crazy people, right? Yes, yes, they say all manner of things. Who is your senior, is it senior pastor, it's something they say, who's, you know, they say a lot of things, right? They cannot understand it. They cannot understand God's purpose. So the resistance started right there and then, before it even started. There's so many of them. It continued. In Acts, chapter 10, verse 9 to 15. Don't worry, I'm, I'm coming back to Ephesians. My hand is on it. In Acts, chapter 10, verses 9 to 15. He says, "The next day, as they went on their journey and drew near the city, Peter went up on the house to pray. But the sixth hour, then he became very hungry and wanted to eat. But while they made ready, he fell into a trance and saw heaven opened, and an object like a great sheet bound on the four corners descending to him and let down to the earth. In it we are all kinds of four-footed animals, one creeping things and breaths of the air, and ate. But Peter said, 'Not so, Lord, for I have never eaten anything common or unclean.' And a voice spoke to him again and said, 'What God has claimed, you must not call common.'" Hold it, hold it, hold it. Even the super apostle had problem. Had problem. Don't forget, we're looking at the frustrations. Why Paul said, "I was given this ministry." Right? When we move in a little, a little bit, verse 34. Verse 34 down, "Then Peter opened his mouth and said, 'In truth I perceive that God shows no partiality. But in every nation whoever fears him and walks righteousness is accepted by him. The word which God sent to the children of Israel, preaching peace through Jesus Christ, he is Lord of all, that the word you know, which was proclaimed through all Judea, began from Galilee after the baptism which John preached, how God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the Holy Spirit and with power, who went about doing good and healing all who were oppressed by the devil, for God was with him. And we were witnesses of all things which he did, both in the land of the Jews and in Jerusalem, whom they killed by the hanging on the tree.'" It's okay. 44. "While Peter was still speaking these words, the Holy Spirit fell upon those who heard the word, and those of the circumcision, who believed were astonished, as many as came with Peter, because the gift of the Holy Spirit had been poured out on the Gentiles also. For they heard them speak with tongues and magnified God. Then Peter answered, 'Can anyone forbid whether that they should not be baptized, who have received the Holy Spirit, just as we have?'" 48. "And he commanded them to be baptized in the name of the Lord that they may..." Amen. We're still looking at the frustrations, even Peter had. Just to take this gospel that some people refused today to the Gentiles. The Jews saw it as their birthright. But that wasn't God's original intention. In chapter 11, 1 to 3. "Now the apostles, apostles and the brethren who were in Judea heard that the Gentiles had also received the word of God. And when Peter came to Jerusalem, those of the circumcision contended with him." Wow. Saying, "You went into uncircumcised men and ate with them." But Peter, okay, we can stop there. I just wanted to show the resistance poor brother Peter had to take this wonderful gospel to the Gentiles. It looked as if it was having a hard time. That's why Paul said, "God, who knew me from my mother's womb, chose me." I think that God needed somebody with a fresh mind, not among the old block. Because they had a problem. Right? We have problem. When people come in here, they see us from different tribes and nations, right? They have a problem. Because we should have a Chinese church, right? Or Filipino church, right? But that wasn't God's intention. Acts 23, I just read verse 30. Acts 23, verse 30. "And when it was told me that the Jews lay in wait for the man, I sent him immediately to you, and also commanded his accusers to state before the judges against him." It's okay. This was the letter, right? That was sent how they wanted to kill Paul. The Jews, the same people that killed the Lord Jesus. Now Paul wants to, according to God's command, to take this thing to the Gentiles and they want to kill him. Sounds like the Pharisees. They don't want to enter the kingdom, but they don't want others to enter. Now when Paul speaks about the mystery, we can understand a little bit. Let's see the mysteries. He says in Romans, chapter 11, verse 25. Romans 11, 11, verse 25. And he says, "For I do not desire, brethren, that you should be ignorant of this mystery, lest you should be wise in your own opinion, that blindness in part has happened to Israel, until the fullness of the Gentiles has come in." We're getting close to the mystery. In Ephesians, where we read yesterday, chapter 1, in verse 9, he says, "Haven't made known to us the mystery of his will, according to his good pleasure, which he purpose in himself." Verse 10. Now we read again, 9 and 10, yeah? "That in the dispensation of the fullness of the times, he might gather together in one all things in Christ, both which are in heaven and which are on earth in him, in Christ." Chapter 3, verse 1. Chapter 3, verse 1. "For this reason, I, Paul, the prisoner of Christ Jesus, for you Gentiles." Verse 3. "How that by revelation he made known to me the mystery, as I briefly written already." Verse 9. "And to make known, make Paul see what is the fellowship of the mystery, which from the beginning of the ages has been hidden in God, who created all things through Jesus Christ." Chapter 5, verse 32. "This is a great mystery, but I speak concerning Christ and the church." Chapter 6, verse 19. "And for me, the utterance may be given to me, that I may open my mouth boldly to make known the mystery of the gospel." It's getting a bit clearer how it is now a mystery. And it has been hidden that you and I will become God's people. This mystery is the church. It was not known. How wonderful. But I'm gonna tell you something. Acts, chapter 9, verse 15. Acts, chapter 9, verse 15. You remember this, Paul's soul's conversion. "But the Lord said to me, 'Go, for he is a chosen vessel of mine, to bear my name before who? Kings and the children of Israel, for I will show him how many things he must suffer.'" Oh, Lord Jesus, amen. So from here, we can understand a little bit why Paul says that this mystery has been hidden from ages. And when it was time, God needed such a person to be able to deliver this mystery. In another place, he says, "This mystery is Christ in you." Oh, Jesus, amen. Having gone through a little bit about the mystery, I will continue with Colossians. Chapter 1, verse 26 to 27. Colossians 1, 26 to 27. He says, "The mystery which has been hidden from ages and from generations, but now has been revealed to his saints. To them God will to make known what are the riches of the glory of this mystery among the Gentiles, which is Christ in you, the hope of glory." We can go to chapter 2 and verse 2. He says, "That their hearts may be encouraged, being need together in love, and attaining to the rich, all the riches of the full assurance of understanding, to the knowledge of the mystery of God." Amen. Amen. Chapter 4, verse 3. "Meanwhile, praying also for us, that God will open to us a door for the word, to speak the mysteries of Christ, for which I am also in chains." Back to Ephesians, chapter 3. "For this reason I, Paul, the prisoner of Christ Jesus, for you Gentiles. If indeed you have heard of the dispensation of the grace of God, which was given to me for you. How that by revelation he made known to me the mystery, as I have briefly written already, by which when you read, you may understand my knowledge in the mystery of Christ." What is the mystery of Christ? The church. God in eternity passed. Nobody has seen God. So what was God? What is God? God is mystery, right? Can you describe God to me? No, you can't. Me too. However, in time, the only begotten of the Father, he came and revealed him to us. You know what he told the brother? Why, Philip, why are you asking me? Show me the Father, show me the Father, right? When you see me, you have seen the Father. So God Almighty, who has been a mystery, was revealed in the Son. Today, we don't know all the dimensions of the Son. Or do you? Like the last brothers that spoke. The mystery of Christ is the church. Because he is the head. He is not complete without the body, which is the church. Do you want to see Christ? Do you want to see Christ? Go to the church. Because the church is a revelation of Christ. This mystery has been hidden since ages. In fact, in a particular place, he said, "The prophets who prophesied, they sought. They wanted to know." You know, I like a verse in the Bible. He talked about John the Baptist. He was a very violent brother, right? He meant to hurt and said, "You cannot do this," right? Guess what? You know what the Lord said about him? "Of all men born of women, there is none like John. But in the kingdom is the least." Of course, Paul, I mean, John the Baptist did not experience what you and I are experiencing today. The dispensation of the fullness of the Spirit, that God, the Son, the Father, and the Spirit, the all-inclusive Spirit, now lives in you. No, these brothers, they didn't experience that because it only happened in his death and his resurrection. Because when he died, he became the Spirit, became the all-inclusive Spirit to indwell each one of us. Now, this power in us is a power that makes us Christians. And it was among the Gentiles in Antioch that those who followed Jesus Christ were called Christians at first. Why? They were living like Christ. Why? Because they have received this power to live a holy life. So if you're a Christian and you don't live a holy life, what did Paul tell Timothy? "These ones have a form of godliness, but deny the power they're in." That is why, as we continue in Ephesians, we will realize that we need to pray very much because it's a high calling. We need to pray. "God, reveal yourself to me. Show me yourself." If you're living a defeated Christian life, today you're up, tomorrow you're down. You can take it to the Father. You have finished this work for me. I am a member of the church, and the church is the manifestation of Christ. So, if my life is not like Christ, it doesn't mean I'm not a Christian, but it just means that I do not have the fullness of the Spirit. Verse 6, "That the Gentiles should be fellow heirs of the same body and partakers of his promise in Christ through the gospel, of which I became a minister, according to the gift of grace, of grace of God given to me by the effective working of his power." What was the purpose? Verse 8, "To me, who am less than the least of all the saints, this grace was given, that I should preach among the Gentiles your suchable riches of Christ." Remember, remember all the efforts, you know? I want to recall your mind how God wanted to enter the Gentiles. There's nothing he did not do to Peter. Peter was in a trance, he gave him food. He said, "No, I cannot eat," you know? If you go further in Jerusalem, Peter even did wonderful things, right? You remember, right? They had some limitations, and we also would have the limitations. But the church is all by the Spirit. In the Spirit, we don't have limitation. There was some form of limitation. And that was why God had to pick this brother. His name is Saul. He was changed to Paul. So that when he talks concerning this mystery, you know? When we talk about this mystery, we talk about the life. When Paul was making, when he was putting his resume, right? He says something that's very interesting in 2 Corinthians, in chapter 2, from verse 1. We'll read it. But I just want to point something there. He said, "I know a man, whether he's in the body or in the spirit. He was caught up, and he saw things that couldn't be spoken." This mystery is Christ and the church, that we Gentiles, people who are far away, can be grafted in. If you don't appreciate yourself, how much God has done to bring us here, we will be able to give up everything, brothers and sisters, everything. "And to make all see what is the fellowship of the mystery, which from the beginning of the ages has been hidden in God, who created all things through Jesus Christ." Verse 10, "To the intent that now the manifold wisdom of God may be made known by the church to the principalities and powers in the heavenly places." Now, saints, if you realize what you took God to enter into you, Calvin, you will know what kind of life you have. You have a high life. We can no longer live defeated. God had an original plan. It is not by mistake. He was, the brother was telling us, "Well, he started from the beginning." You're not here sitting by chance. It was God's original intention. That's why he said, "You were even chosen before the foundation of the world." "According to the eternal purpose," oh my, it's even there. "which he accomplished in Christ Jesus our Lord, in whom we have boldness and access with confidence through faith in him. Therefore, I ask that you do not lose heart at my tribulations for you, which is your glory." You know, it looks like a paradox, right? This guy who had this wonderful revelation, eh? He's in tribulation, he's in prison. Doesn't it sound funny? So if you're not careful, the saints will be discouraged. Don't you think so? If this Paul had this wonderful mystery of God's economy, they should just catch him like this and put him in prison. You will give up, just like Peter did. You know, Peter had a lot of hope in Jesus Christ. He said, "The Messiah, the King, has come," right? And he saw them, they were taking him like a common criminal. The brother gave up. Even when a small girl came to him and said, "You are his disciple," I swear to God. You know? Sorry, I'm laughing, but when your expectations are not met, I thought this guy has come to deliver us. He came to him again. "I know you. You are one of him." The third time, the Bible says, "He was even swearing." He has seen this guy do so many things. He even raised the dead. Today, how do you see yourself? You're in God's best. You're in God's original intention. You're in God's plan. But yet, you have challenges. Grace, you agree with me? How come we are in God's best? And yet, we have challenges? Don't you have challenges? Right here? You have challenges, right? But our citizenship is not on this earth. We know who we are believed in. And we are persuaded. God's original intention. Nothing can foul it. That's why he said to them in Matthew, chapter 16, "I will build my church, and the gates of Hades will not prevail against it." This is his intention. He will build it. All I pray is that I want to be part of it. Yeah? Even if I'm the gate man, right? Beg you, even if I'm the gate man, I want to be part of this. It's a wonderful thing that Saul was, you know, the revelation he got was so much in 2 Corinthians, we can read it. Paul saw a lot in 2 Corinthians, chapter 12. From verse 1, he said, "It is doubtless not profitable for me to boast. I will come to visions and revelations of the Lord. I know a man in Christ, who fourteen years ago, whether in the body, I do not know, or whether out of the body, I do not know. God knows such a one, but caught up to the third heaven. And I know such a man, whether in the body or out of the body, I do not know. God knows. How he was caught up into paradise and heard inexpressible words, which it is unlawful for a man to utter. Of such a one I will boast; yet of myself I will not boast, except in my infirmities. For though I might desire to boast, I will not be a fool; for I will speak the truth; but I refrain, lest anyone should think of me above what he sees me to be or hears from me." Verse 7. "Unless I should be exalted above measure by the abundance of the revelation, a tongue in the flesh was given to me, a messenger of Satan, to buffet me, lest I be exalted above measure." Paul saw so much. He saw so much. And God in his wisdom. You remember this thing? If you read that, he said, "He left something, and I besieged him, I prayed three times. Lord, take this in away." He said, "I will not take it away. My grace is sufficient for you." We need such humility. We need to be met in this kind of place. Otherwise, it will enter our head. But don't forget, you're in God's best. The church is what is after. Let no one deceive you. God's calling is without repentance. He has chosen us right from the foundation of the world. And let no one deceive you. Don't let the Satan take you away from this inheritance. I'm rounding up. I just speak a little bit about two other brothers, and then I'll be done. Stephen. Acts, chapter 11, and verse 19. I'm sorry, Stephen. But it's actually your name. Acts 11, verse 19. You know, just three brothers, and I'm done. 11:19 says, "Now those who were scattered about after the persecution that arose over Stephen traveled as far as Phoenicia, Cyprus, and Antioch, preaching the word to no one but the Jews only." You know the story? You remember the story? That's the right word, okay? This is part of the frustrations. But it was God's intention. You know, sometimes you wonder, "Why do I have to go through this?" Have you thought of that? Sarah? Haven't you thought of that? Why me, right? Me, I do sometimes, yeah? Do I have to go through this? Sometimes, he says, "His ways are not my ways, just as the heaven afar from the earth." He took the stoning of Stephen so that the gospel can spread. That is God's ultimate goal, to spread the gospel to you and I. Some had to pay the ultimate price so that we can hear it. And so when you see what we have today, we should appreciate it. God's original plan and intention was how to get us to reveal this mystery to us. Barnabas. In Acts, chapter 11, 23 to 24. Acts 11, 23 to 24. "When he came, he has seen the grace of God. He was glad and encouraged them all, that with purpose of heart they should continue with the Lord; for he was a good man, full of the Holy Spirit and of faith; and a great many people were added to the Lord." I love the way the Bible described this brother, Barnabas. I didn't see it so much except for this week. He says, "He was a good man, full of the Holy Spirit and faith." Then he downed on me. No wonder. You remember? When the Holy Spirit said, "Set a path for me, Saul and Barnabas, for the work that I have for them." And if you watch Paul's missionary journey, he went to Barnabas. And Barnabas was a wonderful brother until flesh came in. You know how flesh came in? His cousin, Mark. When they wanted to go back, he wanted to drag his cousin, flesh. Paul wasn't happy with that. But that's where they cut off. But do you know why some Bible scholars believe that the flesh distracted him? Was that was the last time we heard about Barnabas in the Bible? So what would hinder us from following the Lord? The lust of the eyes, the lust of the flesh, the vangery of life. These things would haunt us, would haunt us, until we will realize that the church can only be built in the spirit. The church, you see, we are all one in the spirit for God's purpose. But when we are not in the spirit, like the brothers that spoke earlier, I said, "We are capable of anything." That is why we should make the more effort to be in the spirit. Finally, I read about Paul, Saul, about his great encounter with the Lord. This particular revelation was what drove his life from the day he was converted to the day he died. Just one goal. Be on such able riches of Christ. That was what he was striving. Today, we have this riches. We have this Christ. And I pray that each one of us seated in this room would so much appreciate the church so much, especially if we can call to mind what God had to do for us, the wide olive that we can be grafted in. When you read the same Paul again in Romans, he was crying for his people. But he also said that it is necessary, he had this revelation, it is necessary that we, the church, which is the wonderful revelation of the mystery of Christ. And that is why we cannot afford to fail. The church cannot fail. If we fail, God forbid. God has lost. Because we are the body, the head. We have to match the head. You know? Say, I'm this black guy like this. If you remove this guy's head and put on my hair, it doesn't match, right? If you see me, you will run, right? The body must match the head. You don't agree with me? Praise the Lord! We should be in the spirit. Finally, from 14, "For this reason I bow my knees to the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, from whom the whole family in heaven and earth is named; that he would grant you according to the riches of his glory, to be strengthened with might through his spirit in the ill man; that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith; that you, being rooted and grounded in love, may be able to comprehend with all the things what is with and learnt, and death and height; and to know the love of Christ which passes knowledge; that you may be filled with the fullness of God. Now to him who is able to do exceedingly abundantly above all that we ask or think, according to the power that works in us; to him be glory in the church by Christ Jesus. To all generations, forever and ever. Amen." What a wonderful prayer that Paul said that should be our prayer today. Pray for ourselves. Let's pray for one another. Let's pray for a brother who is not doing well, or a sister who is not doing well. This is how the church builds itself in love. Because we have seen it, like the last brother spoke, this love constrains us. We need to ask. If I don't see Calvin, I need to ask. Calvin, so now you know why we have to ask, why you're not here, right? Praise the Lord.
You know, this matter of the mystery, it's... I don't know if you've ever had this experience of having something that was a mystery become clear to you. But this is something that we as Christians all need to experience. And during the time of, the reason why it was such, this matter of the gospel that the Gentiles should be part of the kingdom of God and belong to, and should be able to partake of all the riches of Christ and the promises of God, the reason why it was such a mystery is because of the environment that they were in. So they were surrounded by people who were, they grew up in this type of Judaism, right, in the Jewish law and the Jewish belief. And all this time, for thousands of years, only the Jews could access God. So this idea that now it's open to the Gentiles is foreign to everybody. Nobody's ever heard of it before. It's never occurred to anybody. So it's not a surprise that it would be hidden to everybody because it has never been known. There's no such thing. And so, that's why it was such a miraculous thing for this mystery. It's something that is hidden. It's not revealed for it to be revealed to Paul. And Paul realized it so much that he, like Brother Ozzy said, he even gave up his whole life to preach it. Right? It was that big, and it really is big because if Paul didn't do this, we would not be here. You know, it was huge. But that, but nowadays, from our perspective, it's not a mystery anymore. Because it's clear, obviously, if it was a mystery, we wouldn't be here, right? We know that the gospel is for non-Jews. But what is a mystery today is the matter of the church, along with many other things. Why? Again, is because of the environment that we're in. We are in an environment where there are so many religions, and even among Christianity, there are so many different beliefs. And there are so many different churches, different types of churches, different interpretations of schools of thought. So this is, this matter of the church is still a mystery today. Because through the past 2,000 years, there have been so many teachings, and many of them wrong, and Christianity's been mixed up together with politics, with money and power and government and the world. It's just been all mixed together and, you know, nobody really, the real meaning of what it is to be a Christian and what God's plan is, has gotten lost. I think at this time, it was probably more clear, but because of what Satan has done, it has become a lot more unclear. And today, and I'll give you a good example. Okay, sorry, just had to block out the noise, okay? I'll give you an example. If you ask somebody, "What is the church? What is a church?" What will the man on the street say? What will he tell you? It's a building, it's a cathedral, it's a group of nice people, it's... They'll tell you everything that they think a church is, except what it really is. Because what it really is, they don't know. Because it's a mystery. And the mystery can only be revealed by the spirit, which is what Ephesians, chapter 1, says, that it has to be by the spirit of wisdom and revelation. 2 Corinthians, chapter 3, also says that it is by, it is when, by turning to the spirit that the veil is taken away. Right? 2 Corinthians, chapter 3, verse 16. "Nevertheless, when one turns to the Lord, the veil is taken away." And this veil is covering their eyes. You can't see, uncover a mystery if your eyes are covered. The word "revelation" means that it's been revealed, but if your eyes are covered, you can't see what it is. But the only way your eyes can be uncovered is if you turn to the Lord. But the problem is, Christians today do not turn to the Lord. They turn to man. They turn to books. They turn to internet, Google, AI, whatever it is, right? They turn to everything, but they just don't want to turn to the Lord because they think that, they think that they can't understand the Bible. They don't know the spirit that was given to us. And when they read the Bible, they don't understand because they're reading it with a veil over their eyes, and they're reading it with, you know, colored lenses. So they can't really, it doesn't make sense, and they're reading it through the interpretation of all the garbage they picked up over the years. So that's why they can't understand what the church is. And that's why I shared that chart with you yesterday to show that in every age, God has been trying to, he's revealing more and more of his plan, which is that he wants a nation of people for himself. He wants a kingdom, a kingdom of people for himself. And he will. In the end, he gains it. Everything is under Christ, and the whole universe belongs, will be ruled over by him, and all the people will be under him. Right? He gets that. But in this age that we're in, which is the blue bar, the church age, we are in the church age now. It hasn't reached up to the point, in the previous age before Christ, the kingdom of God was just physical. It wasn't, it was only restricted to the Jews. But now it's moved up. It's moved, the revelation has gone higher. It's now spiritual, and it's not only the Jews, but it's all people. But it's still invisible. It's still spiritual. But then it's going to move even higher in the next age, when the Lord comes back, it's going to be a visible kingdom. Every eye will see him. It will be on earth. You will see Christ reigning over the earth. And then eventually, it'll be even higher because there will be even a new heaven and new earth. And God's dwelling will be with man forever, on earth. So it's going higher and higher. So, but right now, that's why Paul says in chapter 3, verse 10, "To the intent that now..." This "now" means this age, this current age that we're in. The purpose of the church is to make the world see the glory of God, the manifold wisdom, the manifold wisdom of God. It's to be made known by the... Yeah, it's, the purpose is to, that is what the church is for. But if the church is worldly and full of flesh, and it's a money-making business, it's an entertainment business, that wisdom, that holiness and glory of God will not be made known. Even what the church is, people don't even know. They think, oh... People think, "Oh, because you're in these four walls, you're in our church. This is our church." And then you cross the street, there is somebody else's church, and then you go to that church, next Sunday, you come to this church this Sunday. "Let me decide which church is better, and then I'll pick that one." There is no such thing in the Bible. That never existed. The church is just simply the people of God. Those who have the life of Christ in them. And they are, these people who have the life of Christ, all Christians are meant to be built up together. Chapter 2, last verse, 22, what we read this morning. They're meant to be built up together. They are meant to manifest the manifold wisdom of God. And verse, chapter 3, verse 18. "All the saints, the brothers and sisters, together, working together, sharing their experiences and what they've gone through, their fellowship; they can comprehend the width, the length, and depth, and height." So if you go to that church, and I go to this church, and you go to an Indian church, I go to a Chinese church, and I stick with the people that I like, you stick with the people you like, we'll never have that building up together. We'll never have, be able to, I'll never be able to comprehend what Christ has done in you, nor will you have in me, because I've decided to separate myself off, to be with only the people who are like me. And you are just with the people like you, because it's more convenient for me, it's what I prefer. We have a nice softball team, we have a nice worship band, a beautiful choir, programs for children, that's what I like. I don't care what God wants. It's, yeah, the Bible says it's his dwelling place, but no, it's my church, so I want it the way I like it. Just like you go to Harvey's, you can make your burger the way you like it, right? People want the church to be what suits them. And that completely goes against what the church is. Because it's all the people of God, where their self is dead and buried on the cross, and it's only Christ being lived out. Like Ozzy said, if the head is holy and glorious, how can the body be divided and selfish and just doing what we like, mixed up with the world? When even when Christ was on earth, he didn't live, he never lived for himself. But why is it now the body of Christ, the Christians, we all worship God the way that we like? We live how we like. We worship, you know, we do, the church is organized the way that I like. Right? So here, at this point, even this little thing in chapter 2, verse 22. It says that it is for, you are being built together. Built together. You cannot be built together if you're at home watching sermons on YouTube. There's no building up. If you just see brothers and sisters only on Christmas and Easter, and the rest of the time you're by yourself. Right? I'm only, I'm all by myself, right? There's no building up together. For a dwelling place of whose? Whose dwelling place? It is God's. So if, because it is God's, I have no say in how I want my church to be because there is no such thing as my church. It is not about what I want. It is all about how God decides it to be, because it's his dwelling place. It belongs to him. He gets to dictate how the church should be. If he says that there's none of the world in here, none of, you know, it has to be, everybody has to be perfect and holy and following Christ day by day, abiding in Christ, there's no, you know, even in the organization, there's no leader, there's no head of the church dictating what happens. The head is only Christ, you know? There's no division, there's no separation, there's no... You know, recently, somebody came in and told me, you know, "We need to have a, we need to have a children's choir here." Yeah, somebody told me, "We need to have, get all the children together, have them practice a song, and then have them sing at the front for us." I said, "That's, we don't have any, we should not have any performances in the church meetings." Because everything is for God. It is not for our enjoyment. Right? There's nothing for man. The church is not for man's enjoyment, for our pleasure or... The church is not for man's enjoyment, for our pleasure or for our interest. The church is wholly, completely for God, right? And this is a mystery, this is what I mean, it's a mystery. Because if people really were to practice this, they would have to change everything. Everything that they know, the positions that they have, the power, the money that they have in the church, they would have to give that a lot. I met someone recently, it was actually, it's Richard's younger brother. He was telling me a few weeks ago, he's been going to church to church to church. And he told me, one pastor told him, "I know there are things that we need to talk about, but I can't speak about them." Because if I speak about it, people will leave, right? Though people will leave if I speak about these things. But he knew that this is the truth, but he saw that it's a problem. And he realized that because they depend on these donations, that if people leave, then their revenues will go down, they'll lose money. So again, it's a money-making business. It's all about money. You compromise on the truth so that you can have more money. I was at the church, right? That's a man's organization. So, this is why I mean that, you know, we've been sharing, us brothers, is that that the church is not, it's not a human organization, it is completely heavenly. Hebrews even says that it is not made with human hands. But yeah, we put our human hands on it all the time. We think this is good for God, that's good for God, let me do this for him, let me do that for him. I know this, if I do this thing, it'll attract lots of people, and lots of people will get saved. But by doing that, we compromise on the truth. We bring in problems, we bring in the world, we bring in the flesh. We use the flesh, the attractions of the flesh to attract people, because hey, it'll get lots of people saved. Right, and so this completely misses the point that we are supposed to be a holy people. The church, because it's the body of Christ, it must be holy. It has to be separated, it's seated in the heavens with Christ, you know. Yeah, and it's supposed to be making known the manifold wisdom of God, not be influenced by the ugly wisdom of the world. We're supposed to be influencing them, but they're influencing the church. So today, everybody's confused about the church because of this environment, because of Satan, actually. So the church today is a mystery. And even what comes after the church age? What is, what comes after? Why all this happens? It's all a mystery. Because people don't understand. They think we're all just gonna go to heaven one day. To heaven to do what? What does God get for us being in heaven? What does he get? What happens to the earth? So we go to heaven, what's left on earth? Does anybody think about that? The sinners are in hell, we're up in heaven, so who's left here? The animals? Just the animals running around? No, you know, people don't read the Bible. It says that we're supposed to be ruling over God's creation. You put all things, Psalm 8, we read it on Monday, yesterday, "All things, all creation has been put under the feet of man." He's crowned us with glory and honor to rule over the creation. And Revelation 21 says that the new Jerusalem descended out of heaven from God onto the earth so that God can make his dwelling with man on the earth. Really, you know? So that's why it is true, very true, it is a mystery, because we're surrounded by confusion. And the source of the confusion is the father of lies, Satan. So, we really have to bring this word back to the Lord and seek him. What is, what are you actually doing? What is your church? What are you, you know? So, yeah, may the Lord give us a, that we would turn to the Lord to have our veil taken away.
As we experience back home, mostly the... As we experience back home, like going up with the church and the church, most of the sins, like, they're always keep the church clean, like, not, like, um... It's like a meticulous, um, church and the world. Supposed to be, mostly the religion, like, before, they're only celebrating Christmas, like a Catholic, but now, most of the Christian group, right? All of the, all of the religion, so... The sins back home, although they're not celebrating Christmas, but they're participating in Christmas with the colleagues or the friends, so... We just like, um, remind them that since we're not celebrating Christmas, we know the truth, but we still keep doing, practicing what they're doing. So, it's the same thing, right? So, I realized that there's, there is coming Christmas party in our company. It's coming December, I already paid to join. And then now I realize that, you know, this is not good, I know the truth. And although I already pay, players with me. So, yeah, at that time, I first, in flesh, I'm so excited. It's my first time to join the Christmas party in our company. But, you know, the truth is, you know, the truth is for Christ, right?
You're saints.
You're saints, so... I don't know. It's really hard to, um, exercise the truth, like... Um, it's easy to say that, oh, this is the truth, and this is not the truth. I mean, you still do it, right? It's practical, it's, as a Christian, we are full of temptation, you know? Like mostly more on celebration, worldly celebration, and then... It's really hard that, as we know, that it's not good, but we're still doing. So, I don't know, it's like, I think we're not doing. They already bought me a clothes.
Yes, Paul said, "For this reason I bow my knees to the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, that he would grant you according to the riches of his glory, to be strengthened with might through his Spirit in the innomann."
And the problem with what you mentioned is because many people associate church only when you come into the gathering. And when I'm not in the gathering, I'm me, I have, I live my own life. So they wear two hats, we wear a church hat and then we wear a me hat. But we are part of the body of Christ, always. Wherever we go, that's where the church is. We are the people of God.
Yeah, it's good to be reminded what we are in. I just remembered a song we have in our hymn now, one of the old ones, it's saying, um... I'll just read one or two stanzas. It says, "Remove my covering, Lord, that I may see thy light and be deceived no more; for all things see a right. Oh, may thy living light, Lord, scatter all my night, Lord, and everything make bright, Lord, for this I pray to you." The stanza says, "As for the church, I need thy revelation more, the body life to know, thy wisdom to explore." Listening to all the sharings of the brothers throughout these days, it just dawned on me that, knowing the church is progressive, it's not just one of us. Because as the brothers were sharing, things were coming into my mind, things we were, we didn't know before, things maybe the Lord may affirm. But it's wonderful to see that the Lord had done so much to bring us to his body. And this thing, we shouldn't take for granted. Our lives are not separate, I don't have a different life, the one I bring to the meeting and the one I have, no, it should be the same. The consciousness to see that, you know, the Lord is, I am, the Lord is seeing me. Wherever I am, I need to represent him. And I like that, also the aspect of the brother pointing out, you know, several instances of how the mystery was revealed to Paul. You know, how we needed, God needed a plain, a heart that is pure, a heart that is not encumbered with all the oldness of religion. That's why for us to see the church, you must come to an end. Like, how do I explain it? For you to see the church, religion has to come to an end in your heart, or you're not seeing it yet. There's many times, my experience of seeing the church life was, I was tired of religious practices. Where I was, if you don't come to an end, to say, no, there must be something more, you still think that you can bring along that into the body, no. So my take from the sharing is, like, the startup meetings, and "The book of Ephesians is a high book," and truly it is. If the Lord does not give you that understanding, the Spirit daily showing you God's goal, at some point you're wondering, are you sure? It's the same. Many people think it's the same, it's the same. We think, we do, it's not the same, it's not the same. If the Lord does not open your eyes, you will not notice that it's not the same. Just as one of the sisters in time passed, you know, when you look at the book of Revelation, you see the woman sitting on Babylon. It has the same attributes, everything about it looks like New Jerusalem. It has, it's decorated, it's this and that, it's until you look into the cup, you see that it's filled with abomination. So, but for us, the church, the church, we thank the Lord so much that he showed us mercy. And also, we ourselves need to exercise such patience and mercy for the ones God is bringing in. Because many times, because I've been in the church life for so long, I think when somebody comes, you must know it. No, I didn't get to know it that way, but the Lord built us up until we came to this point. So when the Lord brings in people, we require patience and endurance to raise these ones up. So I just thank the Lord for opening my eyes, mouth, to see the church. Amen.